Oh, thank you. We'll try it again. How's that? Sorry about that. Then we'll start over. All right, we'll call this meeting to order. The governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. While the governor recently issued executive orders N-0721, which lifted certain orders and associated restrictions, there are still public health directives in place. Executive Order N-0821 now allows local legislative bodies to continue to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are top priority for the city of Yuba City, and you are urged to take all health and safety precautions. This meeting is utilizing the Zoom application for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the question-and-answers functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the answering questions-and-answers section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those that would like to comment during the meeting, please enter your comment into the questions-and-answers portion of the app, and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for a specific item. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Esmondola.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
All right, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, would you please read our closed-session items tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two items for closed session. Closed session item 1A, threats to public services or facilities pursuant to Government Code Section 54957A, consultation with the city attorney and/or Yuba City Fire Chief, Police Chief, Director of Public Works, IT Manager, and City Manager. Item 1B is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph 2 of Government Code Section 54956.9D, one case.
All right, thank you. Do we have any comments from the public on these items? Do we have any comments from anyone online?
No public comment.
Okay. With that, we will adjourn to closed session. Sorry. We will call to order the regular meeting. Need to read the information for tonight. The governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. While the governor recently issued executive order N-721, which lifted certain orders and associated restrictions, there are still public health directives in place. Executive Order N-821 also allows local legislative bodies to continue to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are top priority for the city of Yuba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. This meeting is utilizing the Zoom application for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the questions-and-answers functionality in the tools in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the question-and-answers section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the questions-and-answers portion of the app, and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Be timely with your questions, because once the public hearing is closed, or the item has been discussed by council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Esmondola.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
All right, thank you. Tonight's invocation will be given by our vice mayor. And Mr. Ben Moody, will you lead us in the pledge following the invocation? Please stand.
Please bow your head. Heavenly Father, we thank you that you listen to us. Please help us listen to each other. May each of us around this table really hear what our team members are saying. Enable us to acquire and understand the accurate information we need and its implications so that we may make informed decisions. Help us hear the complete message being communicated. Help us not get distracted by things within or outside this room. Help us avoid thinking of what we want to say when we should be, instead, be listening and absorbing what is being communicated. Amen.
Would our city attorney report out of closed session for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Is there any agenda modifications? Okay, hearing none. Please do note that the correction to item 9, the appointment recommendations for the Gilcizer Drainage District, should include myself, Councilmember Esmondola, and Councilmember Harris as the alternate. And because of the scope and purpose of the Bogue Stewart Master Tactics Exchange Agreement, ad hoc committee has changed. It shall now be referred to as the MTEA Ad hoc Committee. Item 6, the Yuba City Purchasing System Ordinance and Policy Update, will be continued to the next regular meeting on, that would be the 14th, February. All right? Oh, sorry, February 1st. I'm trying to get ahead of myself here. So, sorry. February 1st. All right, let's get it out. Here we go. All right, my apologies. February 1st. So with that, we will move on to our presentations this evening. And we have Yuba Center Transit here tonight to present Mr. Keith Martin as the executive director. Mr. Martin, you have the floor.
Mayor, we're with the council. I have Keith Martin, the executive director for the Yuba Center Transit Authority. Button there, there we go. Let's try that. Again, Keith Martin with Yuba Center Transit. Privileged to be here to give you a little update on what's happening with Yuba Center Transit. At each of your locations, I provide you a collection of our materials, including the most recent newsletter. It's there as well. And I have a short few slides to show you, and we'll go from there. So just first off, just like to let, go ahead and, oh, I have the button too. Wow. I even have the power of the button, that's great. Didn't know they'd trust me with that. Okay, so the first thing, of course, is who are we and what do we do? Yuba Center Transit is a public joint powers agency formed by the cities of Yuba City and Marysville and the two counties, Sutter and Yuba, back in 1975. So we've been around for quite a while now in a number of iterations over these years. Our current fleet is 51 revenue vehicles with seating capacities from 16 to 57 passengers. So we have the small white vans you see around town, and then we have the larger intercity commuter buses, and then our green local fixed route buses in between there. We have a network of six local fixed routes, three rural routes. Dolly Ride Service is our demand response service in the urban area. They have our commuter and intercity service to Sacramento. Those are, our service operates, the main service operates from 6:30 to 6:30 on weekdays, and from 8:30 to 5:30 on Saturdays. We have a small evening, weekday evenings, Dolly Ride Service, as well as our commuter service starts and stops a little earlier with downtown stops as early as 6:15 in the morning, and then pick it up as late as 5:30 in the afternoon. We operate under contract. We have a private transit service provider. We've always been privately operated over the years. And we have, currently have 73 employees, which is down in terms of their FTEs during the COVID reductions. Yuba Center Transit has five administrative staff. We, those are the public employees in our organization. And with that, we also manage the Regional Waste Management Authority, which is good for other presentations some other time in the future. So we've got to be able to do this all at one time. So what do we spend our money on? So I wanted to make sure they had a sense of what we spent our money on and where the money comes from. So initially here, just, we, our budget for $8.3 million this year, FY '22, that number's going to come in a little lower at our mid-year mark. We're probably on a pace for about $7.7 million. We had expected the COVID recovery to happen a little earlier, as we had budgeted for 85,000 service hours. We're currently on a pace for about 76,000 service hours. So a little bit below what we had expected. So with that, we'll show here the various activities. Our operations and maintenance expenses are the largest piece of our operation, at 76%. That's about $6.3 million of our budget, right there. The fuel and tires, another 9% or 10% of our operation. Obviously, fuel, running those buses around, those 76,000 hours consumes a lot of fuel. Then our administration expenses, which is primarily salaries and benefits, but it also includes outside professional services. We do have some grants we have for some planning projects, that sort of thing, that are part of that. And that number's about $936,000. And then the balance is about $340,000 is primarily is our operations insurance plus some of our utilities for operation. So right now, again, we're below what we are anticipating spending for the year, but that's our budget. So with that, now where does our money come from? Again, we have this with our budget of $8.3 million. Any surplus beyond the amount we actually use will be carried over into next year, will be part of our deferred revenues for future activities. But right now, we're probably on pace for about that $7.7 million in expenditures, and so there will be some surplus there. The, most of our funds right now are coming from federal sources. These federal sources are here because you have a public transit system. It's about $4.2 million this year. That number is high this year because of the COVID situation. A lot of these funds, most of these funds are coming from federal relief funds, the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan. So that number is typically around 30% of our budget is from federal sources, and those sources are coming from, for urban and rural transit funding sources from the feds. And those, again, are here because you have a transit system. The next, the largest piece of that is the LTF, or Local Pandation Funds. Those are derived from your local sales tax. They're here for public transit use with any remaining money available for your streets and roads maintenance purposes. Right now, in the four jurisdictions, about $6 million a year comes in from that source. We're claiming $3.1 million of that. That's about half of what's available under this funding source. Typically, this funding source would include another piece of what's called the Transstation Development Act, which is the State Transit Assistance Fund. Those, again, come here because you have a transit system, and they come through the state program. And typically, that, they combine for about 50% of our budget. This year, there's no STA funds in the budget because of the extraordinary amount of federal funds available and the fact that we can overmatch our federal funds this year than we typically can. So the STA funds are being banked this year for our capital projects coming forward in the future. Beyond that, the fair number here at 7% is a fraction of what it typically is. Again, because of the low ridership, and we'll talk about that in a second, on our service due to the COVID situation, that number is normally around 15% to 20% of our budget comes from fair sources. That number is typically, it's in the same ballpark as other small urban and rural transit systems in the state. Probably the regional transit from Sacramento is in the low 20s, if I can give you an example for that. In a good year, of course, they're in the same boat we are right now as far as ridership goes. Other revenue sources include state planning grants. We have funding from non-transit funds, such as the regional waste management authority expenses that we have, as well as bus advertising, bus shelters, bus benches, those funding sources as well. So that gives you an idea of where the funding's coming from. So the next thing is, well, what's happening with ridership? And that's, this number, this page is pretty staggering, quite honestly, especially for those of us who've been around here for a while and have watched the system grow over the years. The orange line there is the FY '19, the year ending June of '19. That's the last full pre-pandemic fiscal year. That total ridership across that board, you see how it varies by season over the course of the year? The holidays typically lower, and then the spring and early fall higher when school's in session, that sort of thing. So it tends to go over in time. The number was, similar numbers in the purple line, which was FY 2000, until the pandemic in March of 2020. And it dropped like a rock to the April low there. Started to climb a little bit as we actually waived all fares on our system, except for our Sacramento service, on April 1st. And so ridership started growing because of the free fare situation. The fares were reinstated in July, and then the green line is the first full fiscal year of pandemic ridership. And you start to see that flattens out over time. There's not the, you don't see the peaks and valleys you saw on a normal year. That, pretty flat over the course of that 12-month period. And the blue line at the beginning there is the FY '22 to date through December. And you can see that the numbers are definitely higher than they were before. These numbers are actually pretty significantly higher. They're averaging probably around 25% to 30% higher month over month. When your ridership starts so low, 25%, 30% is still a long ways away from where you want to be. And so right now, ridership is, has been growing in the last six months, beginning in June, and really started to take off significantly in August. But we still have a long ways to go to get back to approaching the pre-pandemic ridership levels. So some of the issues we're dealing with here right now, COVID-19 recovery, of course. We're on pace to carry about 50% of our pre-pandemic ridership and operate about 84% of our pre-pandemic service hours. The recovery has been very uneven, though. Our Sacramento commuter service is still about 17% of pre-pandemic levels. And that's probably mainly due to the lack of state employees in the offices in downtown Sacramento, along with all other kinds of employees in downtown. Our fixed route service is about 60% of pre-pandemic levels now, and so that number is much higher, but we're still seeing those issues. Facility replacement, which has been talked about a lot recently, is required due to the Caltrans project on Highway 70B Street in front of our facility that may result in our facility being taken as part of the state project. That project is scheduled to start in '23, finish up in '25. The state mandate to convert all of our fleet to zero-emission buses. This is an issue that we're dealing with as well. So we purchased in July a 19.7-acre site on Northville Road in Linda. We're now seeking the money to make that happen. And so we're working with our regional partners, our federal partners, our state partners, all and together to look at a mix of probably all those funding sources to make that happen. The deadline, of course, is kind of dependent upon how the state project goes with the highway, but also we know we have a deadline coming up in terms of zero-emission bus requirements. That's the next bullet point there. The state requirement that only ZEBs can be ordered beginning in January 1 of '29. And 25% of all buses ordered as of January 1 of '26 have to be zero-emission buses as well. Our current facility, in 2018, we did a study. We can hold about 12 buses, zero-emission buses, in our current fleet. We have a 51-bus fleet. They have to be ultimately converted over. So rather than spending millions of dollars to convert our current fleet for a partial conversion, we're looking to actually relocate completely. And then finally, the operational analysis, the short-range transit plan, we're about ready to go out to the street. That's going to our board, the RFP, this week. And this will be a top-to-bottom review of our system. The last transit plan we adopted was in 2015. As you can imagine, a lot has happened since 2015, and that we need to relook at our entire system. I'll be from, again, from top to bottom, operational analysis, looking at the scope, the level, the mode of operation, how, whether we should be transitioning more into a mobility provider versus a traditional transit system, and how that all fits together. We're going to be looking at that over the next 18 months or so. And that'll be the biggest thing we'll be doing over this, that period of time. Well, we're still looking for money, of course, for our facility. So with that, again, I'll give you copies of our materials, our newsletter. We have, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. But other than that, that's the state of Yuba Center Transit as of January 18, 2022. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Any online?
No public comment.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Other notable things, you guys do a heck of a job over at Transit. Just want to shine a light on you guys real quick, because during the pandemic, you guys have also taken workers on a special route up to Gridley, to a processing plant. We did that for, that was the first year, and we did that for about a month or two.
Yeah, it worked out pretty well, but it was being paid for by the processing plant, and they decided that it wasn't quite what they were hoping for.
Okay.
It lasted about six or eight weeks, I think it was.
That was it. And then the new buses that we're purchasing, just so the public has an idea, the zero emissions range and what kind of price range?
Well, a traditional fixed route bus is about $1 million. We can, they're under $500,000, the ones we have on the street now. And the commuter buses are about $1.2 million, and they're about $600,000 right now. So double the price. And that does not count the charging stations and other things that have to be done to upgrade your utilities at the curb, all those issues as well. So it's a huge undertaking, and that's why we decided to move with the new facility rather than trying to retrofit our 1960 vintage setup bottling plant facility.
All right. Well, thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Martin.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
All right. We will move on to agenda item number three, appearance of interested citizens. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be considered at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Members of the public will have three minutes to speak. Written requests received at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allocated five minutes to comment. And do we have any comments from the public this evening? And I do have a card. Okay. All right. Then we will start with Mr. James Anderson.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, for giving an opportunity to say a few comments. Do I need my address and all that?
Please, I was just about to ask.
Yeah, thank you.
Name and address.
1591 Spencer Lane, Yuba City, about a half a block from Greenwood Park. Thank you for that, too. I want to thank you for serving our community, and I want to thank you as well for serving our neighbors that have no home address. For the past 10 years, we have been serving the homeless through the program called REST, Regional Emergency Shelter Team. And for the last eight years, it has been a rotating shelter, moving from week to week to a dozen different churches for about a four-month period. Last year and this year, you provided, again, permission, and we thank you for that, to adopt a stationary shelter model. And I was with those guests just a couple nights ago, and they're so welcome, and they're so happy to have a place with a warm meal and a comfortable bed. So I just am coming tonight thinking this was going to be an occasion to address the Home Key Project that was described in the paper on Saturday. Apparently, it's already been decided not to proceed, and I just wanted to register my disappointment. My disappointment, on behalf of those friends that I work with regularly through the winter shelter months, but the disappointment, too, from the larger community. I know there's always a nearby pushback that comes from any potential project. I see the Bonanza as sort of a virtually invisible location and an ideal opportunity to transform it into something that would become very suitable for a select group of our people, including our veterans. So I realize that if we don't want to do something, we'll find a reason. If we do want to do something, we will find a way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next will be Laura Anderson.
Actually, he said everything that I want to say. I'm usually the very verbal one.
All right.
Same, same agenda. You know, can I just stand right here?
We'd ask you to come to the microphone.
Thank you. And it's Laura Anderson, 1591 Spencer Lane. I live in Yuba City, but I teach, I'm a teacher in Marysville. And I am very, very aware with my students and people that I work with that have a lesser income than I do, the great difficulty of finding affordable housing. And so I was really disappointed. I've seen what Habitat has done with, can't remember the name, but it's out on 99. I've been there, I've talked to several people who live there. And I actually think the project at Bonanza could have improved the neighborhood. It could have upgraded, because I've seen Habitat do a really good job. And I know you have your reasons, but I'm just really personally and professionally disappointed because I think it could have been a very good thing. And I thought I was coming tonight to address that, but I'm just addressing what's already happened. So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Is there any more public comment? Any more public comment? Any online?
No public comment.
Okay, thank you. I'll just say this, when it comes to Habitat and Home Key. The city has always taken a stance of partnering, as we have partnered with Habitat in the past. And we have to look at every project. We held a very lengthy, in-depth meeting on that. And we have also spoken, I personally spoke with the leaders of Habitat, and very much look forward to working with them on a project in the future. This particular project is where it's at just because of the merits and things that go with it. Nothing against Habitat, and they do a heck of a job. They serve a part of our community. We have partnered in the past. We look forward to partnering in the future. And we just want to be very much involved in that and getting all the answers that we need. So, but I appreciate you guys being here this evening. Okay. With that, we will move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Would anyone on the public like to speak on any of these items? If so, please come to the podium. Anyone from the public? Anyone online?
No public comment.
Okay, then I bring it to the council.
To the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to pass consent counter items four through 13.
I have a motion. And I have a second. Councilmember Harris.
Mr. Mayor, and just to be clear, that excludes the item that was continued to the next meeting. Is that correct? Item number?
That was 10.
Six.
Six.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with the exception of six. And you concur with that, Councilmember Harris? Okay. Any discussion from the council? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Let's move on to agenda item 14. This is public hearing number four, consideration of draft district maps and election sequencing for the district-based election system. Selection of district map and election sequence, introduction of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Yuba City, California, adding sections 2-9.04, 2-9.05, and 2-9.06 to Chapter 2 Title IX of the Yuba City Municipal Code to establish a district-based system of elections for members of the city council. Tonight, we have Mr. Robert McIntyre here. Is he here?
It doesn't look like Mr. McIntyre is here. He was here, but he's not right now, so I'll go ahead and cover this until he gets in, if that's okay with you, Mayor.
That would be fine.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council, members of the public. As you know, this has been quite a process as we've been going through the transition from at-large elections to the districting, elections by district. This is the fourth hearing in a series of hearings that have been done. There were two initial hearings where the city council received multiple public input and provided opportunities for the community to provide input as what they would think districting would look like and what would work for the community, including communities of interest and keeping groups together. As you know, at the December 21st meeting, the city council made it in what I would call a preliminary selection under the California Voting Rights Act of what is called the green map and the green map sequencing. The green map is in your staff report, and it's also available online along with all the other maps. And the sequencing would have districts 1, 2, and 3 in 2022, and districts 4 and 5 in 2024 for election purposes. There were notices that were put out in both Spanish Punjabi and English. There have been no additional public comments or maps which have been received. I shouldn't say public comments. No additional proposed maps which were received by the deadline of July 18th. And so we are here tonight looking at the first ordinance. We have Robert here as well, who is available for any questions that you may have. And other than that, I think that should do it for our end. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jaffen. Mr. McIntyre, you have the floor.
Is this working? Okay. So as we, as you heard from council, you've been through a rather vigorous process, thank you, thus far with the first public hearing and second public hearing where we talked about concepts. You came back and covered the three draft maps that were available to you and had a vigorous conversation about the pros and cons of each from a policy perspective. You heard from your community members regarding some of those policy considerations and what they consider to be important around the concepts of neighborhoods and communities of interest. And so at the end of the last meeting, you really narrowed down to that last green map. And here in the viewer, we can see, we have the ability to zoom in and move around and look at the green map at the most detailed level, if you'd like. But the purpose of tonight, unless there is a change in consensus of the board and a desire to consider other maps, really what we're hoping to do with the public hearing tonight is get kind of final input from the community around those topics that have to do with neighborhoods and communities of interest. And then hopefully hear from the council and just kind of round out that conversation on some of the policy considerations that you've been thinking about on the pros and cons of this map before, if it is in fact moved forward for ordinance. If it is, then we also have to have that conversation around the sequence of elections. The map as submitted from NDC suggested that the sequence of elections would include districts 1, 2, and 3 in the 2022 election, and 4 and 5 in the 2024 election. We do know that District 2 has two people paired, two council members paired, which unfortunately, given the Federal Voting Rights Act and the Fair Maps Act and the State California Voting Rights Act, it was unavoidable, unfortunately. And so this map, based on prior conversation, did a really nice job of striking a balance between those three legal criteria, but also observing some of the traditional districting criteria by observing the will of the voters in the last election. Did you have any specific questions about the map itself?
Is there?
Sorry. Is there any questions from the council this time before we start the public hearing? All right. And if you have no objection, we'll go into the public hearing. Okay? The public hearing on the public hearing number four, consideration of draft district maps and election sequencing for a district-based election system, selection of a district map and election sequence, introduction of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Yuba City, California, adding sections 2-9.04, 2-9.05, and 2-9.06 to Chapter 2 Title IX of the Yuba City Municipal Code to establish a district-based system of elections for members of the city council is now open. If there's any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. And do we have any comments from the public? And we do have two that came in via email. Sierra, if you'd like to.
Okay. I'll go ahead and read the emails that we received this afternoon. The first is from Harjit Singh. Says, "My name is Harjit Singh, and I am a Yuba City resident. I am providing input on the city's redistricting process and the proposed maps. After going through each map, here's what I have found. Out of the three proposed maps, NDC Green does the best job of meeting redistricting requirements. However, there are still some areas of improvement for it. District 3 is cutting into neighborhoods that should be part of District 4. In order to keep this community of interest intact, I recommend that the city extend the easternmost part of District 4 to Walton Avenue. I look forward to seeing these changes being implemented and thank the council for their leadership in the redistricting process." The second email is from Rena Thiara. "My name is Rena, and I am a Yuba City resident. I'm writing to you today to give my input in regards to the redistricting process that is currently taking place for city council districts and the draft maps that have been proposed. As a member of the Punjabi community, I strongly believe that out of the three maps that have been proposed, the NDC Green is the best at representing my community. Though this map is much better at representing my community than the orange and purple maps, there are still some very important changes that are needed to be made in this map for it to accurately represent the Punjabi community living in Yuba City. District 4 and 3 split the Punjabi community in half, and the Punjabi neighborhoods that are placed within District 3 should be kept together with the rest of the Punjabi community of community district in District 4. Therefore, I ask the city to extend the easternmost part of District 4 to Walton Avenue. This will ensure that this community of interest, the Punjabi community living in District 4, which shares the same language, culture, places of worship, is kept together. I look forward to seeing these changes being made by the council, and I want to thank you for your time."
All right, thank you. Is there any other comments from the public tonight? Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, is there any other comments online? Is there any comments from the council? Okay, hearing none. Then we will, hearing no further comments on the issue, I'm closing the public hearing and bringing it back to the council for action. Does the council have any questions?
Yes, I have one. As per, the questions that came in, at this part in the game, it's unrealistic to think that those lines could be adjusted. Am I correct in saying that?
Well, when I, the reason I scanned in on the map is because I see Walton here between 3 and 4, and so I have to look at the number of people in these census blocks. And what I see is if I move all the way over to Walton Avenue here, I've got 945, 120. So I worry about population balance if I were to make that move all the way over. That's part of what we were struggling with because we, otherwise, that's also why we would have gone straight up Tharp Street. We would have continued all the way up and cut over higher if it weren't for the population balancing. So that's why we've got that kind of that jog, right? That's why we've got this jog here. That's why we didn't capture this section here and keep pushing the whole top part of the council district over for the same reason. It was population.
Thank you.
And if I could just add one thing to that, Mayor, if that's fine with you?
Yes, sir.
That is, under the, as Robert has said previously, under the California Voting Rights Act and the other laws that are applicable, we have to keep a certain amount of balance. There's only so many people you can have in one district or the other. And District 4 is already one of the biggest districts already. And if it were to take on additional population, there would be problems with having one district overpopulated and the other districts underpopulated that have to have adjustments around, which would hit our boundaries and stuff as well. So I think with this particular map, Robert has done a very good job of balancing out the requirements, at least under the law, to make sure that the right numbers are in the right districts.
Thank you.
All right. Looking for questions.
Through the mayor? Not necessarily a question, more of a comment, which is, I know when we embarked on this project of districting, there was, you know, a fair level of confusion. Why the heck is the city doing this? And aside from the fact that, you know, there's Voters' Right Acts and other legal requirements to do so, you know, it was time for Yuba City to get, to consider it to avoid legal problems. So as we continue to move forward with this process, I think it's important to note that through the help of our demographer and our council and the deliberations and staff is to continue to be transparent and make the, this districting process, which is brand-new to Yuba City, as legally defendable as possible. And therefore, I think that by virtue of the stuff that we have been through as a council and the public and with our help, is the green map and the sequencing provided by such is the most legally defensible. It doesn't include any gerrymandering, none of that kind of shenanigans that sometimes goes on in communities. So I would make a, be happy when the time is right to initiate the motion to continue on with this process, but I don't want to shut anybody else out from comment first.
Thank you through the mayor. Thanks. I do appreciate the input by the two community members. I think I want to acknowledge the fact that they've taken the time to really go through these maps and sincerely appreciate you giving your input. And I agree that NC Green map is the best map in the balance of the work, and we hired a very well-known, reputable, transparent, honest firm to help us walk through this process. So, but I just want to thank the two people that provided some input.
Councilmember Harris. All right. Then I bring it back for action.
I think this is going to be a tricky motion, so.
Councilmember, if you are inclined to improve the green map, all you need to do is read item D.
Okay, that's where I was going to go. I'd like to make a motion. Do I need to read the whole thing, or can I just abbreviate it by saying item D is staff-presented?
I'm so sorry. You have to, in this particular instance, please read the whole thing by title. Thank you.
One else want to do? No? I'd like to introduce and make a motion in item D of the staff report under item number 14 to introduce through the first reading by title only with further reading waived an ordinance of the city council of the city of Yuba City, California, adding sections 2-9.04, 2-9.05, and 2-9.06 to Chapter 2 Title IX of the Yuba City Municipal Code to establish a district-based system of elections for members of the city council and set the next public hearing and second reading of the ordinance for February 1, 2022.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. McIntyre, for being here. We'll move on to agenda item 15, levy of the 2022 Annual Assessment of the Downtown Yuba City Business Improvement District, and we have our city manager, Dana Langley, presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Actually, it'll be Sandy Drown that'll be presenting tonight, but the item before you is the levy of the 2022 Annual Assessment of the Downtown Yuba City Business Improvement District. We're asking tonight that council conduct a public hearing and then after consideration, adopt a resolution confirming the annual report for the Yuba City Downtown Business Association and levying the assessment for the Downtown Business Improvement District for calendar year 2022. So with that, Sandy, if you could come up and give the presentation, please? All right, let me adjust. Sorry about my attire today, but we're getting ready to go on vacation. So we are busy working, trying to be able to take a couple days off before we go on vacation. So thanks for understanding my attire. I would love to dress up for you guys. So the Plymouth Street Shopping District, and my name is Sandy Drown. I am the president of the Downtown Business Association, and I also am with my husband, the owner of the Happy Viking in beautiful downtown Yuba City. So here is the Yuba City Downtown Association, and our mission is to preserve, promote, encourage, aspire businesses to, and provide safe, clean center for culture, community life for residents and visitors alike. Our DBA vision statement is to be known as the premier shopping, dining, and entertainment destination for the region. Here is our street area, our zones for the Plymouth Street, and you'll see everything in orange is our commercial, it's commercial zoned A, and then you'll see in that lighter tan area, which is Zone B, and then you'll see also a mix of residential within our downtown. Here is our current executive officers and also our board. So you'll see it's a collective of our downtown as well. And then here is our budget for 2022. As you see, we've got different things going on, our associated dues that we actually generate, our, help me find that crystal, where am I at? As I look. Okay. So it's 29.5. I was looking for that number, and I couldn't find it. Sorry. So 29.5 is what we generate through our DBA members, and those are to create two events, signature events within our community. We do a pretty good job of managing that budget. This is our membership, and so it's kind of cool to kind of look at, to see in those different areas that we have professional use, we have retail, and then we have food and restaurants. And then our average dues for most businesses down there is 485, and it is projected on how many employees you have. So something like the Happy Viking would probably be paying a little bit more, but I think it is also fair for, depending on how large your business is down there. Here is our beautiful downtown, as you see. We keep on enhancing that. And then we've got our associated members. The associated members are not anybody that is required to pay for dues, but people that support our downtown. And of course, we've got the city right in there, which is a great partner of ours, and we appreciate them very much. You'll just see other businesses as well. And then we have new businesses, which this last year has been a little bit intense, but I believe the community that we live in, this is why we have so many businesses here. We've been able to thrive. So we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 new businesses. So that's pretty great for having 80 members down there, but we're super excited with all of our members down there. And then we did have three businesses that closed. One had to move to a bigger facility. The other one went to mobile with hair, and the quality and signet just completely closed. I think COVID was tough on them. So three rare experiences, but we did get, we gained out of that, new businesses. And then coming soon, we did have a successful 2022 summer stroll and Christmas stroll, and we appreciate the mayor for lighting up the tree. Everything went great on that. And some big successes, which we always talk about, was our first and second event since COVID. We had about an average of 15,000 people that came. Better attractions, we're always trying to create that to drive people down. Had our city managers there. One of the big things, if you see to the right, is missing children. That does happen when you do a big event. So we haven't had that since we've taken over, yeah, which is a big deal. You learn some of the things. And so anyways, and gain more expertise, volunteers like Salev is one of our big volunteers that helps us out a lot for this event, met our budget and strengthened our partnership with the city and the staff. And that includes fire and the police department as well, which has been great. Just big kudos to our police department, Sergeant Hack and his team, fire, of course, Chief Alexander, and our fire marshal who helps us with our food trucks on Center Street, public work, Scott Chandler, Jack McDaniels and his team, and then our new city manager, who has been a great partner, and of course, our mayor and our city council, who supports us on our two big events that we have. We really do appreciate that. So thank you so much. And then DBA upcoming projects we have, we have this new logo that you see in the back. It started on a napkin, and I keep on talking about that because I think some of the best conversations start on a napkin, right? I know in sales, I used to get a lot of great information on a napkin. So we also have talked about downtown arches, which we've met with a couple of people and submitted that to the city, so hopefully that becomes something soon. And then we've talked about, from the DBA's perspective, of having downtown signage so people really know you're in our downtown district. And I know from the Viking, we have a lot of people that come from Roseville, Sacramento, and are super impressed with our downtown already. So it's been exciting to hear that because you never know when you're, you kind of like drive down that street all the time. So here was our logo that we came up with from the napkins. You'll see officially, this is our new logo. And you'll see, we really did try to capture kind of the buildings down there. We had somebody design that for us, and we kind of rehanced that. We wanted to make sure that the Center Theater got on there and that it looked as realistic as possible, but also looking like a good marketing strategy as well. And then here is some of our downtown arches that we worked with. It's called the Yesco Company. They came down and we met with them. We learned a lot from a DBA perspective of wind and all those great things that most engineers get, and we were just like, oh, we didn't think about that kind of stuff. But anyways, here were some of the stuff that they came up with that worked with our logo, and then that's it. So I'm Sandy with the downtown. So any questions?
Any questions from the council? All right.
Well, the mayor would be really proud. I'm going to Disneyland for two days. So if you guys need gifts, let me know. So if you guys need gifts, let me know. Make sure they're under $50.
All right. Just say hi to Mickey for us. All right. Before we go to the, the public, I forgot it, we need to open the public hearing. So the public hearing on the levy of the 2022 Annual Assessment of the Downtown Yuba City Business Improvement District is now open. If there's any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment. State your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public at this time?
My name's Thomas Burns, and I live at 1885 Green Gate. I did notice that somebody graffitied up the wall on the new theater remodel and was wondering, you know, what you guys are doing to stop that kind of vandalism down there.
So if you're asking me directly, is it okay for me to answer?
Please.
Mr. Burns, what we've been doing there is working with the Yuba City PD down there with Officer Koski on that. And so we've got a great relationship. Troy calls us quite frequently and we're kind of combating that. They just recently actually helped us with some homeless issues down there that were, we had a violent homeless office or a homeless person down there. And so I think just really is partnering and anytime we encounter something, the DBA lets the, the city know, we try to work out strategies. We work with Public Works as well. But I think in the last couple of years, especially since I've been on board, we've been very fortunate that the city, as long as they know things, we use the YC 311. We make sure our business owners are using that as well to help the lines of communication. But yeah, we're constantly working with the stuff down there. We've got fires that have happened, arsons that have happened down there. We recently have had a lot of car break-ins. And so we've been very vocal to the city and we've worked out plans and kind of helped identify those areas that we, we need to work on. So I hope I answered your question.
All right. Any other comments or questions concerning the 2022 assessment? Any other comments or questions from the public? Any online?
No public comment.
All right. Then with that, hearing no further comments on the issue, I'm closing the public hearing and bringing back this matter to the council for action.
I move that we had, hold on, make sure I'm in the right. Adopted resolution confirming the annual report just conducted, thank you so much, from the Yuba City Downtown Business Association and levying the assessment for the Downtown Business Improvement District for calendar year 2022.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
We'll move now to item 16, renewal of the Yuba Sutter Tourism Improvement District. And that is going to be presented by Mr. Ben Moody.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you tonight is regards of considering a resolution of intention to renew the tourism improvement district with the, with the Yuba Sutter Lodgers Association. So here tonight, the helps, present the item and speak on their behalf is Jacob Young. He's the current president of the Yuba Sutter Lodging Association. And then Gina Reed with the consultant, with Civitas, that's helping them through the process for their 10-year renewal. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jacob.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council for having us here. I know we were able to submit our annual report back in September, being a highlight what we did last year and what we're looking at doing this next year. Today, we're back specifically in regards to the TID renewal. So it was a five-year initiation, initial term of levying the assessment. You obviously have the 10% TOT funds that come to the jurisdictional budget. And then this is for the 2%. That is the supplemental assessment that the city collects and then pass throughs on to the Yuba Sutter Lodging Association for the marketing efforts specifically. And so we are now before you today to start the process of doing a 10-year renewal as we are on the sunset of that five-year term. And we want to move forward as the lodgers to move forward with extending that for an additional 10-year term as we are able to do so. So as you can see, just a couple of talking points on that. There are currently 114 tourism improvement districts in California. When the YSLA was formed and the TID established, we were the 100th one representing two counties there. And so there are now currently 114. Overall, that has raised over $300 million specifically towards tourism promotion. And then the Yuba Sutter TID was formed in 2017 and includes the cities of Yuba City, Marysville, Live Oak, Wheatland, and the unincorporated areas of Yuba and Sutter Counties. And then as we are moving forward with the renewal, the services that the YSLA provides, like I said, it's all tourism marketing, but it's specifically marketing and sales programs, sports and outdoor recreation programs, transportation and visitor services programs used to increase demand for overnight tourism, therefore the mantra of the heads and beds. So obviously, the intent would be, from the lodger's perspective, is the more that we can invest in marketing tourism in our area, the increase of tourism, increase of more room nights being booked, but also the trickle-down economics of that is more people buying gas at gas stations, going to our stores, going to the downtown area, and frequenting those businesses established as well. So the trickle-down economics is a huge benefit to our region. The estimated, or the assessment rate, like I said, would be 2% of the rental rooms. So there is no added cost to the jurisdictions. It is on to the visitor themselves. They would be paying a 12% instead of 10% rate. So that 2% going to us, the 10% to the jurisdiction. The estimated annual budget would be $40,000, which when we went for on the initial five-year term, the initial budget established was $250,000 with the hope that as this got going, we would see this effort grow and more revenues coming into the effort. So that would be about, if I'm doing my math correctly, about a 62%, 63% growth from the first years to where we are now, looking at the years coming ahead. A big part of that, too, would obviously be adding on establishments. I know we have another one opening hopefully this year here in Yuba City. But also you have Hard Rock that joined in, even though they were not required to do, pay into the taxes, they self-assess to be a part of the effort and be a player at the table as well. So exciting to see the growth that has generated from that. So then lastly, the Yuba Sutter Lodging Association will continue to serve as the Owners Association. And then as you see up here, include four assess business owners and the representatives. One government rep from Yuba City, which is currently, Ben Moody is serving in that role. And then one government rep from the other jurisdictions, we'll just leave that, which currently Brenda Stranix from the EDC is representing that role as well. So I want to keep it short and sweet. I'm going to turn it over to Gina to go over the legal aspect of as we're moving forward, the timeline, everything else, and then we'll be available to answer any questions. But I just thank you, council, for your time today.
Awesome. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Fabulous. Good evening, everybody. My name is Gina Reed. I am the senior project manager at Civitas Advisors. We were the consultant that assisted with the formation of the TID back in 2017. And just as a sort of reminder, if you will, Civitas, we are the leading firm in helping cities and counties, not only in California, but all over the U.S., form all types of business improvement districts, primarily TIDs. So very excited to be here tonight. So as Jacob mentioned, I'll just quickly go over the steps to renew a tourism improvement district. I have been working with the Yuba Sutter Lodging Association over the last several months on steps one through three. So we have been doing hotel outreach and consensus building to talk to the lodging businesses about what the renewed district looks like. As Jacob just presented, there really aren't many changes to the district aside from the term. The law does allow on the initial term, you're allowed to do five years. On a renewal, you are allowed to do up to the 10 years. So that is what we are proposing. We have been in a petition drive over the last several months. We have met the legal requirement of collecting petitions from proposed businesses, which allows us to come and start the city council process. So this is the first of three stops at city council. So as mentioned, tonight, we're asking for a resolution of intention to renew the district. Following this meeting, a notice will be mailed to all assessed businesses, letting them know of the next two public hearings. So the first one will be on February 15th. There's no action by council at that meeting. It is just to hear public testimony. And then finally, on March 15th, we will hold a second public hearing. And assuming that there is no protest by the assessed businesses, council can at that meeting adopt a resolution of formation to renew the district. So aside from that, Jacob and I are here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions from the council? All right. Is there any questions or comments from the public? Any questions or comments from the public? How about online?
No public comment.
All right. Then I will bring it back to the council for action.
To the mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution of intention to renew the Yuba Sutter Tourism Improvement District.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. We'll move to agenda item 17, purchase of ESO Fire Records Management Software. And this will be presented this evening by our fire chief, Chief Alexander. Chief, you have the floor.
Mayor, councilmembers, tonight I'm here requesting authorization to enter into a 60-month advanced payment contract with ESO Fire Records Management Software. Next slide. Yuba City Fire Department's current records management software is called Firehouse, which we've had for numerous years. However, it was recently purchased by ESO last year. In October, we were formally notified by ESO that Firehouse will sunset on December 31st and that Firehouse software installed on local servers will no longer receive customer service or support in 2023. Next slide. How Firehouse, I'm sorry, how RMS works in the overall grand scheme of how a call comes in. So individual will receive a call from 911 that comes in. Portion of that goes to our computer automated RMS code, computer aided dispatch center, also known as CAD. We love acronyms in the fire service, so you're going to hear a whole bunch of acronyms throughout this presentation. While the caller also talks with the dispatcher. Dispatcher receives information from CAD, but they also input some CAD information. That information, it can be fed to our MDT, another acronym, or mobile data terminal on the engine, but then it also feeds information from the dispatcher via voice to the station or to the apparatus. At the conclusion of the call, all that information that was gathered goes through an interface into our records management system, also known as RMS. Next slide. RMS is basically a collection of software designed to perform data collection services. It meets all the legal requirements for documented inspections, activities, and incidents themselves. You're talking to an individual, next slide, that thinks that nothing is more important than the turnouts or the apparatus that you need to get to an incident. However, the reality is RMS is just as significant as that as moving forward. Some of the components of the RMS that are so vital is it puts a timestamp on all your apparatus, timestamps your personnel, it handles all your patient care reports that we use on EMS incidents, it handles all the incident action narratives, our fire investigations, our inspections, our daily logs, and our schedule. And why that is important is another acronym, NIFRS, is our National Fire Incident Reporting Reporting System. All that information needs to be pushed over and sent to NIFRS every year. It handles all of our legal documents that we might have to get pulled when there's a request for records. Additionally, statistical analysis, show everything that you see from our annual reports that is pulled, that comes from our RMS software. SSV is our reporting's requirements, and that handles all of our EMS providers' information, and then all of our criminal investigations. Next slide. So ESO, as I mentioned, purchased Firehouse. Due to the specific nature of records management software, there's limited availability that's out there. Another common provider of records management software is ERS, another acronym, which is the Mercy Reporting System. ESO also purchased ERS. There's various benefits to going to ESO. One of those being is the migration of data that's already currently in Firehouse. Since ESO owns Firehouse now, that migration of data is so important, that should go across much smoother. Another, next slide. Another advantage is that when you implement a new records management system, it is a heavy lift and it takes a significant learning curve for a lot of personnel. As a result, it's a major commitment to a fire department, and it's not something that you change at the spur of the moment. It's a long-term investment with your personnel. As a result of going with ESO, there are some discounts that we can receive by going into a much longer-term discount contract. We do have one term and one time and reoccurring fees associated with that. And so you have on this screen a 12-month contract and the discounts are shown, and then a 60-month contract and those identified. Next slide. Our recommendation is to go with a 60-month contract, just a little over $152,000. Other options that are available are to go with a supplemental appropriation for a 12-month contract, or the file option is do not authorize a purchase for ESO or EMS. Are there any questions?
Thank you, chief. Is there any questions from the council?
To the mayor, if I may.
Sir.
Chief, if we can go back one slide, maybe Sierra. On the 12-month through 60-month through one-time fee is the same. Is that, on the 60-month, is it annually or are we saving four times 1285?
So those reoccurring fees are the annual component. So those one-time fees are just that big push to move all that data over. That bigger decrease in discount was for some of that reoccurring fees that go along with that. We will receive a credit from Firehouse as we move forward. However, I do not have a specific amount on that because they will not give us a number until we make the full transition over on that deadline. Because this was, will be a lengthy period to migrate all that data over and to make that full switch.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, through the mayor. Chief, are you, do other regional or neighboring jurisdictions, do they use the same software?
So ERS is another one that's used pretty often. ESO is going to be a relatively new one for everybody that's going into this system. We were, when we first found out that ESO was purchasing Firehouse, that was one of the first initial things is going to ERS, which is what Marysville utilizes, and that was what our hope was. Well, with them purchasing ERS, they've also notified all their providers that ERS will also be sunsetting in a short amount of time. So you see a large push of individuals from Firehouse and ERS trying to come up with a, the third file option of either going with ESO or looking at a third provider. So there's a lot of fire agencies that are in the same situation we are right now.
I know you're probably aware of some of the emerging discussions on consolidated dispatch and records management that's going on regionally. Is Sutter County using an RMS for their fire at this point?
I believe that they are. I believe that they were, and I'm speculating, I remember some discussions about what they were going to, but I haven't, I'm not 100% certain of which path that they choose, chose. But I'm pretty confident they are using an RMS.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Vice mayor? All righty. Then I will open it up to see if there's any comments from the public. Any comments from the public? Any online?
No public comment.
All right. Then we'll bring it back to the council for action.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution authorizing the sole source purchase of ESO Fire Records Management Software and enter into a 60-month advanced payment term in the amount of $152,027.25. And also authorize finance director to use funds from the American Rescue Plan Act account 256069201 in the amount of $152,027.25.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The eyes have it. Chief, you'll get your transition to the new software, sir. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to agenda item 18, the final financial report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2021, presented by our finance director, Mr. Spencer Morrison.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I'm presenting the year-end update for fiscal year 2021. These are audited numbers. These are audited numbers, and it'll be covering the general fund and utilities as the major funds. Starting with the general fund. For fiscal year 2021, we're looking at good news. Revenues landed much better again than expected and actually above the original budget. I will get into the details in the following slides. The expenditure savings was throughout most categories with 1.2 million in savings from salaries and benefits, mostly due to unfilled or underfilled positions in planning, human resources, police, and public works. 1.1 million in material supplies and service had, were, there were big, big savings, big decreases in activity due to fewer purchases during the ongoing pandemic. And we had a savings of 15,000 in capital acquisitions from, mostly from streets, capital purchases that are ordered but delayed. Savings occurred across most departments and most line items of the budget. I'll give you a breakdown of the savings by department in a later slide. So the, in the 2021 budget resolution directs staff to maintain a 15% healthy cities reserve. So I'm showing from the, the operating surplus, how much of that was taken, was taken out for the healthy cities reserve. A healthy cities reserve is a minimal amount that should be on hand during the best of times. As soon as bad fiscal times are on the horizon or suspected, a prudent city will retain greater reserves. A healthy city reserve serves to maintain a stable tax and revenue structure and provide for the orderly provision of services to the citizens of Yuba City during the times of fiscal adversity. So the budget resolution does also direct staff to transfer the remainder for fiscal stability. Section 4 of the budget resolution directed the finance to make certain transfers to ensure fiscal stability after first ensuring the healthy cities reserve met the 15% requirement. And so 5.4 million was, was transferred. The items that were, that were transferred, where the money was transferred and to, to what, for what purpose are on this slide. And notably, this brings the unallocated general fund CIP up to 6.7 million, and pension stabilization trust to about 5 million. So of the revenues, the sales tax is always the most notable, and it's the, as the largest revenue source. It's the one we, we often talk about first. On this slide, I think you've seen, most of you have seen this slide before. I do want to point out that the, that the green slide, or the green, green bar here is what I budgeted, the budget that the council passed. And then the, the yellow was the projected amount that we, we, as we started to learn more throughout the year, we changed our projection. And then this last purple bar is the actual. And this will be a theme throughout. The, the 2021 budget and the green bar and my mid-year projection on the gold-yellow bar had about, it was about 1.4 million difference. Part of the reason this is such a big difference is that when we were creating the budget, we were still in the peak of the pandemic and weren't sure what the volatility was going to be like in the following fiscal year. So then that's, that's why you're going to see some pretty out of alignment on the, on the budget numbers. But we were trying to be very conservative, not knowing. The projection, we had, was the middle of the year, as we were starting to get more experience with what was actually happening. But you can see we were still off on sales tax by, by quite a bit. The actuals on, on sales tax, I just wanted to compare the, the April through June 2021 compared to the April through June 2020, which is the last quarter of the fiscal year. And you can see that all of the areas had significant, or had, had growth. Where the last time you saw this slide, there were several sectors that were trending downward. But you can see that in 2021, the sales tax just took off like a rocket. Property tax was a little less volatile, fell a little more in line with what we were expecting. This is a 10-year history, shows that there was a previous downward trend and then a recovery. You can see that the 2021 represents an all-time peak for property taxes. The previous peak was 12.153, 12, 12 million, basically in '07, '08. So we've been seeing a pretty steady growth since. We'll continue to watch the second largest revenue source for the general fund to see if there are any delayed effects from the pandemic economy. As we know that while houses are selling at, at higher than normal pricing, at much inflated prices, there's not that many houses selling still. So that should impact our numbers a little bit, too. These are the next several largest tax, tax types. You can see, again, the green is what we, is what we forecast and budgeted, and the yellow is a kind of a mid-cycle projection. And then we've got the, the actuals came in. So in business licenses, we, we started off pretty well, and we, we ended the year in 1920 pretty well. So we thought there was a, there was some hope in, in business licenses, but we actually saw a decline at the end. Franchise fees were slightly above budget. Hotel motel had a comeback a little bit better than we had budgeted, just because I think we budgeted pretty conservatively there. And building permits came in a little bit low. I think we got confident because we had some really big end-of-the-year 1920, fiscal year 1920 receipts. And so we were hoping that that would carry on. CSAG Fire, just a very slight decline. That's the, the part of the county that the, the fire service takes care of. And recreation programs came back a little bit better than we thought during our projection. So just as things started to open up, we got a little bit of an advantage there. Overall, general fund and revenues are following an upward trend. The sales tax is really driving that number for the most part. Onto expenditures. This slide just shows the actual versus, versus budgeted. So if the, if the budget is, is coming all the way out here to the end of this line, then this is a, you know, 100%. Then the percentage of the purple is, is where we fell on expenditure. So you can see in all the, in, in both the categories of salaries and benefits and material supplies and services, we were under budget for, for one reason or another, and I think I mentioned it at the very beginning. General fund expenditures were slightly higher than 1920, but definitely not where we had budgeted. And part of that is, is through vacancies. Part of that is going to be through ordering supplies and materials and equipment, and not being able to take receipt on them, just because of supply chain issues. We did have department savings almost all the way down the board. You can see there's some pretty significant savings as we're going down the list. There were three areas where we were over, but those are, were pretty unique situations that I feel like there, that we, we can address, or at least, at least begin to talk about. But for the most part, departments did save. You know, we did, we did start the year, and we did, did pass a budget with a 7.5% savings in some, in some departments, and five in others. And so that's being reflected here as well. You can see the revenue compared to the expenditures. And you, you can see that after about 1213, so starting with, oops. Oh, I did it. Starting with 1314 was our, was our first year where revenues exceeded actual expenditures. And that has continued on even into the pandemic realm. That's it on general fund. Are there any questions before I move on to utilities? Doing okay? So this is a summary of the water funds budget versus actual. Operating revenues came in 2% more than budgeted. Water sales were $412,470 more than budgeted, primarily due to a rate increase, offset by conservation and COVID-related billing delinquencies. Capital connection fees came in below budget estimates by almost $50,000. Operating expenses ended the year at $760,800, or about 7.4% under budget. Savings occurred in many categories, including $507,000 in salaries and benefits, and almost 1.5 million in material supplies and services. That service ratio is something that we, we speak about often. The calculation, to, in the calculation, we take total revenues, including capital connection fee revenues, subtract operating expenses to get net revenues. This amount is then divided by the total debt service amount to get a ratio. For the city's bond covenants, the rules by which we have to live on, on bond debt, this ratio must be maintained at a level of at least 1.2. You can also read that as 120%. The ratio has been more stable recently than in the past, and, and final financials for 2021 produces a ratio of 2.24%. And then you can see here, you know, compared debt service ratio, kind of our, our trend where we've been the last few years. So wastewater, this is wastewater funds budget versus actual. The operating revenues ended the year about 1.1% lower than budgeted, or 203,400. The utility billing service charges were below budget estimates by just under $100,000. Septage charges were less than budget estimates by 182,000. And sun suite discharge revenue exceeded the budget by 138,000, almost 500. Overall, capital connection fee revenues were 192,000 higher than budgeted. Operating expenditures were at 85.7% of the amounts budgeted. The savings equated to 1.7 million less than budgeted. In reviewing the detailed major categories, the savings were 643,000 in salary and benefits, and 1.1 million in material supplies and services. And then this is the wastewater debt coverage slide. And again, you can see the calculations, but down here, you can see a little bit of a trend of where we've been and where we are on debt coverage. And with that, I will entertain any questions.
Thank you, sir. Is there any questions from the council this evening? Any questions?
Yeah, I asked it this morning, and I apologize, you probably haven't got the information yet, but.
We'll see.
Those third quarter tax revenue estimates from HDL.
Yeah.
When?
Oh, so we have preliminaries now. They're on a preliminary basis, they're showing, so we only have the, so we, we look at the sales tax on a, on a calendar year-quarter system, mostly. So we're looking at the, the first two, so that we're looking at the, the first two quarters of the year. We have actuals. And so when we look back at those two quarters, we're, we're actually ahead. On a, on quarter three, we're still looking to be ahead of the same quarters as, as last year. It's a little bit smaller amount. I think we're back down into the 9% range, but we're still showing ahead in that, in that third quarter.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? How about online?
No public comment.
All right. I will bring it back to the council, making sure there's no final questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to note and file the final financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021.
We don't need a motion, Mr. Vice Mayor, but that's good. Do we? We just need to note it and file it.
It's technically under business, just go ahead and formally accept it, I think we're good.
So, all right. We accept the report. It will be filed. Appreciate it, though, keeping us on our toes. So move to agenda item 19. The annual Sacramento Metro Chamber capital-to-capital legislative program in Washington DC. And this will be by our city manager, Stan Langley.
So for the last 50 years, the Metro Chamber has sent a delegation to Washington DC to lobby on behalf of the member agencies. The city's been participating since 2011 and has sent a delegation pretty much annually since 2011. Even during COVID, there was virtual meetings. Historically, it's typically been the mayor and vice mayor that's attended. And then in certain years, the representative to Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency or the Sacramento Area Council of Governments has attended as well. And so the item before you tonight is to identify who will be representing the city this year at cap to cap. And then also, we would need to approve a supplemental appropriation to increase the council's budget for the registration fees and travel as of, right now, there's currently approximately $6,775 available in the city council's budget for this type of activity. So with that, I'm hoping that council can provide direction as to who will be attending cap to cap.
All right. If I can start this one off for us, I, I brought this to Ms. Langley in a discussion we have a few weeks ago. And cap to cap is a, is a viable program. It's, it's a lobbying trip. I've participated virtually last year, did the things I've done on my, my own expense because I saw the value in it. I started getting, I started asking the question of the former mayors of how, what's the history of cap to cap? How did we get involved with it? Who did we send? And it came out exactly as Ms. Langley said. It was the mayor and vice mayor that was sent. And occasionally, you would have other members of the council that would go because of SECOG or something of that nature, or they would get other groups that they were affiliated with to sponsor them to go. The council during the last budget cycle, and commend former Mayor Boomgarden for, for bringing this forward when we were working on the budget, but we had to tighten our belt, just like all the rest of the departments did. And because when you looked historically at what the council had spent on travel and stuff, it was really disproportionate for us to have this huge travel budget. And some departments that had 10, 20, 30 people in it have a budget that's smaller for training and travel than the council did. So we really have a, a couple of avenues with this, as I, I saw it tonight. And that's why I appreciate, again, the former mayor for asking for this to be put on the agenda, is we need to set up a policy and a precedence going forward to where we know who is going to go. Because I know that, you know, I signed up and was planning on going on my own dime if need be, because I see the value in it. It'd be nice if the city paid for it, but I'm going here regardless. But it's expensive. And we set our budget at 1,500 per council member for the entire year, for all of our different things we wanted to, to where we would have that levity to choose and pick what we wanted to go to. Cap to cap, my bill right now is $5,200 to go cap to cap. So with that, you know, do we want to set the policy to where we have certain positions that the city will fund every year? Or do we want to look at the positions that should be going to have a different, higher budget for annual travel than all five? And this was part of the discussions we had last year, is, you know, how do we budget $20,000, $30,000 for five people to go, you know, on the taxpayer's dollar, when we've got other departments that had an entire training budget of 10,000 or 12,000? So we did the prudent thing, and I still stand behind that. But as you can see, we're in a little bit better position now. We know what we're dealing with with COVID. And with all of the stuff that's come forward, yes, we talked to our congressman, and we talked to our senators and everything here. But there's also merit to being part of that big lobby group that goes to where we don't miss out on some of the, some of the things. They, an old saying that I've heard is, you're either at the table or you're for lunch, you know? And I would rather be, we be at the table and try to bring some of those tax dollars back here and not let them go other places. So that's why I see the value in it. So that's why I see the value in sending at least a small delegation. But we need to decide what the mythology is going to be. Are we going to fund particular positions? Or are we going to raise the budget for certain positions on the council? So that was my thoughts, and I will open it up to my fellow council members for their thoughts.
Okay. Totally agree with the process that we went into. I think the concern that I have is I do think there's value in sending people to cap to cap. You know, this one gets to be a little bit of a struggle for me as I look at the training that is needed and required and beneficial to our line employees. And so then I balance. And I guess it's just the old department head in me going, is it more bang for our buck to send police officers or a public works person or a fireperson to something? And versus, you know, me going to Washington, DC to speak to a staffer for a senator or an assemblyman or House of Representative? I think that there are certain times that it makes a lot of sense for us to have face-to-face contact. And I would note the previous Sabuca reps and the CACOG reps for the work that they were able to do on our behalf. I'm not, I'm not against establishing either more money and/or positions designated. I just say if we're going to do that commensurate with that, we need to make sure that we're taking care of our employees and making sure they're getting the essential training they're getting as well. Because of the appearance of these trips, whether it be to Japan or wherever, is all these guys are going off on a trip. I trust my colleagues to bring something back. That's not always going to be the case. And it hasn't always been the case, in my personal opinion. But if we're going to do something where we're boosting our training budget, then I think we need to be very, very mindful of doing the same for those folks who work for the city.
Any other comments?
I agree. Simply put, I agree. I think if we're going to go, whether it's one, two, three, four, all of us, as long as we can articulate a value attached to that and do something while we were there. Because, you know, while we can compare training budgets with our travel budget, however, at the level at which we represent the city in Washington, DC and with members of Congress, the potential that we have to leverage benefit for the city can be in the millions of dollars, potentially. Maybe not the first year, the second year, or third year. But over time, as you develop and you build upon the relationships that are naturally occurring over there, you can get some big dividends, in five, six figures or more. Or, excuse me, seven or eight figures or more. So I'm an advocate of us going. I, you know, of course, majority of our council, what we, who we decide to send is who we decide to send, and that's fine. But I do think that our participation is relevant and it's productive. But it has to be contingent on that we make sure that we come back and provide not just a glossy overview, but a thorough report of what was accomplished during that time, that we were over there on the city's expense.
Thank you. Ms. Esmondola.
I thank you for bringing this up. I agree with both council members on their points. I think that attending the first year, the, I believe, the majority, all of us were open to, you know, to attend, correct? And there was a choice if you wanted to attend or not. I do, I do think that there's an opportunity to perhaps, you know, how we have that 1,500 set aside right now for each of us to kind of pick and choose. Like, I didn't go to, what was it, the Lego Cities because I thought maybe I could go to a different conference to bring some other information on other committees' assignments. And so, you know, that worked to help bridge some discussion on other areas. I would be in favor if we set aside a budget for each of us, as we have now, like 1,500, to be whatever that amount may be. And the work, you know, this conference is expensive. I recognize that. And it also is a different situation when there's multiple people going together and rallying and working and the teams through cap to cap. But I would say that if we could all have the opportunity to be, you know, invited to go, one, set aside a budget, perhaps, you know, that each of us have kind of a choose to go or not. And it's not like, I mean, the money stays in the general fund if we don't go, right? Or we can be a delegate with other associations that we work with that also brings, you know, that face-to-face, bringing in those millions of hopefully funding opportunities to our city. I think that if you start, especially as we're moving into districting and all those things, if we start restricting who goes, who doesn't go, I think we move away from that opportunity that may be a seed planted and not yet completely fully seen. But again, I would say, open it up to all of us, set aside a budget for each of us. I didn't go to the Lego Cities, but I thought it was a great thing that most of you went. And I went to a different one, which I think was helping with some of the assignments that I was working for the city as well. So those are my recommendations. And I do agree with training for staffing, professional development. Haven't changed that. It's always been important to me in the get-go. And right now, thankfully, the budget is looking very, looking better for all of us. So let's be completely open on how we allow all of us to work together on this.
Vice Mayor.
Through the mayor. Thank you. Well, so I never have, I'm gone before. I don't know what I'm supposed to add to this. But I do like what council member Boom Garden said about making sure that the other departments, this is not at their detriment, so I appreciate that comment. I do, from what you tell me, there's, there seems to, there's definitely a value to going, so. Yeah, I'm all for it. I guess the decision is what that looks like. I'd be fine with all of us going. That's the vote.
Okay. I'll open it up to public comment. Any comment from the public? Any comment from the public? How about anybody online?
We do have a comment from Mr. John Nicoletti. And he says, "Washington, DC regulators respond to elected officials. Cap to cap has up to 400 attendees and is hard to sell a Yuba City message. Book private meetings the day before or after to get even more."
Thank you, Mr. Nicoletti. Yes, I've, before I came on the council, I've been back and forth representing other organizations since the late 90s on Capitol Hill. And that's exactly, it's the relationships you build over time. Bring it back to the council's will. And I will just, since I was the one that brought this to Ms. Langley, I see this myself as setting policy, but as the will of the council, that we go back to the beginning where it started with the two positions that are allocated and not be part of the 1,500. We're going to send the mayor, the vice mayor. But I do see that there's added benefit to where it can be appropriated for that third position for key committee assignments. Like this year, CACOG is actually key with the way the money is flowing from Capitol Hill through the state and through our region. That would be my recommendation, but I will open this up to a motion from any one of my colleagues.
Mr. Mayor, before we go to that, I wanted to just be clear that CACOG has invited me. As a representative, there is a pre-trip for that. So if I am selected to go, I would be going one day early.
Through the mayor, I can see your purpose of review, going back to how things were done. I think in 2018, we all were offered the opportunity to go. I think that, I think we should allow the opportunity for all council members to attend. I, I see your direction and sustaining how things have been done because they've been done. But there's also a great opportunity to connect others who are working on other projects in the cap to cap. And Nicoletti knows it well, as you and others. You know, we can set up one-on-one meetings before we go there with the teams of the different delegations. But the, I think if you, if you start excluding council members in the opportunity to be included, I think that just sends a wrong message to our partners in the cap to cap and the work that we're doing. So I would support that we would all be given the opportunity to attend and the choice be there. And that doesn't mean that I'm interested in attending this year, but maybe next year or with another delegation related to our committee assignments. As CACOG is an important one, water is, so is Sutter Butte Flood Control. There's multiple others that are extremely equally involved in that infrastructure bill that has been passed, which ties, truthfully, it ties us all into the process one way or another. And so I certainly appreciate your thoughts on that, but I'd like to include more of us instead of excluding. Thank you.
Need direction and a motion from this council of which way we're going?
Well, I do, I, you know, I see value, and I don't know if it's even so much as a personal choice to decide to go. It's do we need to go? Is it part of, is it fulfill our obligation as a member of this council to be present? Not whether we want to go or not. And for that reason, you know, I can see there are various, whether we wear the hat of mayor, vice mayor, if you, if we are in a subcommittee or a subcommittee, if we have connections or networking that we can leverage to the benefit of this city over there, I see the value in, as long as we can articulate and come back with a thorough report and be productive, I see the value of giving the option to all of us attending.
I support your motion, if that is a motion, councilman. Thank you. Okay. Can I clear, thank you for clarifying that it's an option, not as I said it. So that's a better way of putting it. The option is there, connected to.
As an option, if there's a need.
Yes, if there's a need, of course.
What we need is a motion that would authorize all five council members to be budgeted and attend cap to cap if they wish. That's what I'm hearing you say.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Let me make my notes here. And we will move to agenda item 20, Administrative Policy, Community Sponsorship Policy, presented by George Marlowe.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I think when it gets past 7:30 and you're my age, it feels like it's past your bedtime.
You have an hour to drive home, too.
Well, to me, and my body still thinks it's about 9:30, so.
So yes, tonight, this item I'm bringing to you is amended community sponsorship policy. The purpose, this policy sets the parameters for the approval of the city sponsorship for community programs or events conducted by local organizations. Background, on March 19.
Sorry about that. Background, on March 19, 2019, council adopted the current sponsorship policy. The intent of the recommended revisions is to create efficiencies in the sponsorship program and better align the current practices with the needs of the applicant. So what changes? Mainly, there's four changes. In the staff report, council received a redlined version of the current policy. In that redlined version, there's mainly four changes. Policy and application language changes to reflect the sponsorship of programs and events. The current policy was mainly worded for events versus programs and events. Facility fee waiver or reduced fee approval by the city manager for those costs less than $1,000. This is something new with this policy on an in-kind contribution of city facilities. Can be small amount. We generally average right around $400 to $600 on these. But to ease the flow, instead of bringing it to council, this policy is for the city manager to approve those less than $1,000. New fundraiser gift basket requests for nonprofit fundraiser support. Local products will actually be in those baskets with city logo items. We have given out gift baskets for fundraisers in the past for capital campaigns. And what this really does is it's bring it in line with our community contribution when a fundraiser is done. Generally, it's a request for one basket. That amount of that basket is generally $100. We have $50 gift baskets and $100 gift baskets pre-made for this purpose. And number four is set dates for council approval on all monetary requests. In most cases, the first council meeting in January, April, July, and October. Fiscal impact, no fiscal impact associated with the adoption of the revised community sponsorship policy. And recommendation, adopt a resolution to amend the administrative policy for community sponsorships. And with that, if we have any questions?
Is there any questions from the council? Hearing none? They're all watching the twinkling stars. Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, how about online?
No public comment.
Then we will bring it back to the council for action.
I move that we adopt, through the mayor, I move that we adopt the resolution to amend the administrative policy for community sponsorships.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? Okay, have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and so the motion carries. So we'll move to agenda item 21. And that is the community sponsorship request for the Film Yuba Sutter. You have the floor still.
Thank you. Mayor and councilmembers, the Film Yuba Sutter Film Commission. The purpose, the Film Yuba Sutter is an organization intended to attract and support the film industry in the Yuba Sutter community. A film commission such as Film Yuba Sutter is a one-stop resource for film, TV, and commercial production. Film Yuba Sutter is being established to attract production to the Yuba Sutter communities. On September 7, the CEO, Marnie Sanders of Yuba Sutter Chamber, made a presentation before council on Film Yuba Sutter. Film production has a widespread economic impact that can benefit our entire community. So the next steps, the next steps in the timeline, once all funding is secured here in January, establish a formal film commission committee, secure a consultant to assist in launching Film Yuba Sutter. January through May 2022, website design and build, create social media platforms. March 2022, initiate process for cities, counties designation, establishing model filmmaking process ordinances. By July 2022, memberships and affiliations with film liaisons in California and California Film Commission. By July 2022, memberships and affiliations with film liaisons in California and California Film Commission. By December 2022, attend up to two trade shows to promote Film Yuba Sutter. And again, this was presented by Marnie in September. Estimated fiscal year, first year revenues. And again, estimating that council would approve and adopt this resolution tonight. Yuba City at $6,250. Marysville has committed already to the chamber. Yuba County has paid $6,250. Sutter County is actually waiting in contingent of council's approval and the other agencies. Yuba Sutter Lodging Association has committed to $25,000. So total revenue, $50,000. And estimated year one expenses. As you can see here, the main bulk of expenses is consulting and website design. So in the FY 2122 budget, community sponsorship funds available currently is $12,398 for community contributions and $5,000 for community events. That $5,000 community events is earmarked for our fireworks. Fiscal impact, monetary sponsorship in the amount of $6,250. And the recommendation is consider a monetary sponsorship request from the Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce for $6,250 to assist in the funding of Film Yuba Sutter Film Commission and adopt a resolution as the same. With that, any questions?
Where do you come up with these closing slides? That's the, that's the number one question.
Got to make it interesting.
There we go, I appreciate that, I know we all do. Any questions from the council?
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
The, the language, consider, so are we, is this, this is an ask tonight, so?
It is an ask.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'd just like to note that Marnie Sanders is available here. Your teams, if council has any questions for her as well.
Perfect. Hi, Marnie. Any questions from the council? Okay? Yes, sir.
Hey, Marnie, how you doing? Feeling okay?
Good evening, council. Yes, I'm so sorry I couldn't be there in person, but yes, I am on the mend. Thank you very much.
All right, very good. Just a quick question for you, if I may. Do, you know, it looks like the funding is heading your way. And do you have staff in place? Or do you have a plan for staff to get everything accomplished that was on the list?
So the staff portion of that is in the plan, but it's not in year one plan. So year two is when we were looking to staff it up. Year one, we're, we'll be working with Sabrina Jurisic. You met her on Teams, I believe, the last presentation we gave. She is a film commissioner out of Shasta County and very well-versed in building a film commission. So we would hire her to help us build that infrastructure and get things rolling. And so she would basically be acting as that staff person as we get moving. But with the plan to hire somebody locally to head the film commission in year two and then three, full-time.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Through the mayor. Marnie, do you, is this going to be turning into a nonprofit? Or is it just an extension of the chamber? How, what are your plans on that?
So the idea is yes, we will eventually procure a 501(c)(3) nonprofit status for the organization. That will most likely not happen in the first year, may happen towards the end of the first year. And so it would operate under the umbrella of the Chamber of Commerce, but as its own 501(c)(3) organization. And certainly, we are in favor of building a strong film commission that supports economic growth and development in our area. And should it evolve into its own robust organization outside of the chamber, we will be happy that that has happened. But for now, we're sort of incubating it and helping it to grow.
Right, thank you for answering that. Because looking at the funding availability for culture and film and film commission, you know, theater arts, there's a lot of money out there in grants available to establish nonprofits, right? And so that's what I'm hoping, that this funding becomes hopefully a one-time request? Or do you foresee to come back for year two? Because if it comes, to get a nonprofit status, it takes at least a good year now, as you know. So that's why, I think your projections are really good there. So are you thinking like a one-time request and then getting that established? And then going out for some really big chunk grants out there? Because there's, there's a lot of money out there.
Yeah, and I, and I know that there is. And, you know, I haven't really dug in and looked at specifically what could be available to help support a mission like a film commission. But typically, what I have seen in my research of film commissions is that they are supported by the jurisdictions in which they operate in perpetuity. So it would be an annual request, and that dollar amount will change over time. But what, what we really anticipate and are very optimistic about is that it will generate, this organization and the work that it's doing will generate a lot of tax revenue in the community, much more so than the initial investment that is being made and that annual investment that is being made. So my hope is that a year from now, we can come back to the council and give you an update on all the progress that we have made. I do realize it probably will take more than a year to really see any real significant economic impact, but, but I believe that it will happen. And we've shown you at our, at least our last presentation, what has happened in other counties, such as Shasta County, where they're, you know, they're upwards of $2 million in tax revenue as a result of production coming to their community. So it can be very significant. We will be obviously looking at ways to implement tracking that, that money that's coming into the community through production. And so we'll be able to come back and report on that as well. But I understand what you're saying, Councilwoman Espendola. And, you know, there is, there is a lot of money out there, and it's not going to keep us from looking for it. But just to be very transparent, the, the plan would be to continue to partner with the jurisdictions on this, this organization.
No, I think you're partnering with, I mean, I like this idea. I love culture and theater and all that. I just, I'm glad you answered directly that you would be coming back. And I also highly encourage, you know, and as any other nonprofit, to look for funding outside of the city funds, which, you know, we have a lot of pressure points. We don't know what that may look like a year from now. So, you know, 6,200 doesn't seem a big-money ask. I appreciate you taking this on as a chamber and many others, the interest of doing this. I just hope that we can find ways to look for funding beyond the cities, you know, providing it. But thanks, I, I fully support it.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions from council? Okay. Marnie, I appreciate you being here tonight. We've had this conversation, I think, over coffee about the Film Commission and everything. And, and you're right, the whole idea is to build the business plan and look at the increased revenue coming in. But the city, as well as the other municipalities, have to look at it as an investment. And we also are going to expect a return on the investment, as we talked about. And if all of that works together, then we can begin, as well as the other municipalities, to carve out some of that extra revenue, not from current resources that we have, but possibly from the increased TOT or other things. I mean, those are some avenues we can look at down the line. It's got to be a direct correlation. So I'm looking forward to the business plan coming forward, looking forward to the growth that you guys will have in that. But definitely expecting a return on our investment in a few years, because that's what we got to have. And you know that and understand that, being with the chamber, that's the business side of us. So, and I know you guys did present us several months ago a plan that showed year over year how this would be increasing as the budget would be increasing, because I believe the budget either doubled or tripled in year two, if I'm not mistaken. It went from 50 to, I think, 100, and then 150, it just kept stepping up. So, so I wish you the best on this. In my recent travels, I have seen, I've been noticing every film. It's been funny, since we talked about this at the end, you know, the Film Commission of Texas, the Film Commission of Atlanta, the Film Commission of Timbuktu. I mean, they're everywhere. So I appreciate you guys taking the lead on this and getting the energy. So with that, I'll take it to the public. Is there any other comments from the public? How about online?
No public comment.
Then I will bring it back to action from the council.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve a monetary sponsorship request from Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce of $6,250 to assist in funding the Yuba Sutter Film Commission.
Got a motion?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Marnie, thanks for being here. George, thank you for all your work that you've done on both of these tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just a clarification, when you say the motion's passed, I just want to clarify that it's a unanimous vote of the entire city council and all the ones that they've passed this evening, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, did I miss someone?
Yourself.
Oh.
Sometimes you didn't vote aye, but you said motion passed. And usually, the default rule is unless you vote no, it's considered to be a yes.
Got you, that was an aye.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to clarify, that was for the other agenda items as well.
All right. So, okay, thank you. Future agenda items, this is the opportunity to discuss with the city manager about items that came up during this meeting this evening that you'd like to have brought back to the council later date. Are there any other comments relating to the agenda items that may have come during the evening tonight that we want to bring back? Any from the council? Hearing none? Anything online? Anything from the public? Okay, then we will move right on down to Agenda Item 23. Ms. Langley?
So we do have a special council meeting next Tuesday night at 5:30, where our Finance Director Spencer Morrison will be presenting on the various funding sources that the city has received. So CARES Act, ARPA money, and providing information as to what those funds can be utilized for and how they've been spent to date. Then also, I also want to recognize the Finance Department, because they were notified that they have been awarded these Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the city's July 1st, 2021 budget. And we know how much work that they put into the budget on an annual basis. And it's great to see them continue this legacy of receiving this award. So thank you.
All right, thank you. That was a short report. I was expecting something else. All right, we will bring it back to the council for their reports. Councilmember Espendola.
Thank you through the mayor. I'm only going to report on the committees that have participated so far this month or within the last cycle of our last meeting. The Regional Water Authority, Jim Pfeifer, who is the executive director. I'm sharing what the Regional Water Authority does, so if the community knows, I think most of the council already knows. But it's a joint powers authority representing two dozens of water providers and affiliates in the greater Sacramento region, and we've been participating for many years. So they, we, they held, we held an election. We reviewed the executive director's contract and his evaluation, which, that was a long process. The meeting was three and a half hours, gentlemen. Yeah, so we have a new chair, and his name is Dan York. He's a general manager of Sacramento Suburban Water District, really good guy, easy to reach, really nice person. The other is Tony Frenzy, he's a Director of Strategic Affairs. He is the new vice chair from Placer County Water Agency. Yuba Water Agency does not participate in this particular region group, but they participate in another group that we joined, and so I'll share on that. I also had the good fortune of the board members of the RWA. I was elected into the governing board within RWA. So I'm extremely honored that the region of 20 more than board members elected me. And there was, participating on the meeting, there's usually between 50 to 55 individuals. And our city manager, also known as our former Public Works Director, highly, she does a fantastic job, and she and I work very closely on all issues and matters of water. So my schedule's going to get a little bit more impact on that. So the legal, Leo of California Cities is going to continue the second year. I've been appointed on that. There was an orientation that happened last week. One newer group that we joined, which is the Association of California Water Agencies, and Dave Egerton, I said that correctly? Egerton is the executive director. And so Aqua is the largest statewide coalition of public works agencies in the country. There are about 460 public agency members collectively and are responsible for about 90% of the water delivery to cities, farms, businesses in California. And so I've had the privilege to work with the newly-elected president of Aqua and the newly vice president of Aqua, Pam Tobin, and, who is from San Juan District. And then Kathy is from Southern Water District. I can't think of her city, somewhere from the south, and she's the vice president. And so I have the honor of being appointed to the Federal Affairs and Communication Committees, which are, from what I understand, it's really tough to get onto the Federal Affairs Committee, and I am extremely honored to be nominated. It's a two-year appointment, so I'm in for one year. We'll see what happens the second. Those are the, the main things related to the water. I was also fortunate enough to be invited to go tour the sites project. This project has been in the works for, I can't say older than me, okay? But it's been there for a long, long time. And so thankfully, Assemblymember Gallagher's staff invited me to join in on a tour with the leadership of Operating Engineers Local 3 and the International Union Operating Engineers Local 3. What that means is that the leadership that oversees Local 3, and they usually drive the big equipment to get things done, right? It's, it's a region of West Coast, which includes Hawaii. Their membership is about 38,000 members that they represent. So I was fortunate to be with their leadership there. Sutter County Board of Supervisor Baines was also there, Vice Mayor Chico Reynolds. The, what's it look like for sites here in the next year to two years? It looks like we are going to hopefully get there, gentlemen. It looks like that by the end of January this month, they're collecting the last environmental comments, hopefully. They might get a stack of who knows how many environmental reviews. They'll go through all of those environmental reviews. The next phase after that is basically two things. The person who's in charge of that is a name that we're familiar, but it's not the same person. His name is Jerry Brown, which is a different Jerry Brown. And so what he and his team are working on after they pass through all the environmental pieces, hopefully, is then the financing, you know, to reassure the state and the Resource Water Board that they can handle all this and then go into water rights. If this project goes through, hopefully, without any glitches here in the next year to two and a half years, we could be breaking ground by 2024. Breaking ground, that would mean that possibly there could be jobs up to 10,000 to 20,000 people, and a project that could take up to seven years to build. It's a necessary project. We need to work on this, and we need to get it done. It's long overdue, there's no question about it. And there's people that are, you know, still thinking it's never going to get done, and I'm crossing my fingers we get there. Another. Another local event that I was, had the honor of joining was the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration. This year, we walked on their second annual, marched with Pastor Marcia Chambers, who is from the Emanuel Family Worship Center, and we walked from the old courthouse all the way out to their worship center in Marysville. And we actually drove back in the Yuba Sutter Transit Bus, which was generous of them to do because I don't know if I can make it back, it was a long walk, I took the steps, it was probably almost a two and a half, three mile walk one way. So there was about 70 of us that participated, there was elected, other elected officials community, and what a privilege and honor to be part of the Martin Luther King and being blessed to be part of this diverse community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Harris.
As far as my boards and commissions that I'm on, everything was either canceled or postponed since our last meeting, including Subuca, but Subuca did have a special meeting at the, in the place of the regular meeting, primarily a workshop for board members regarding FEMA, they call it FEMA 2.0, and which means that they're looking at our water, excuse me, our flood insurance rates based upon a lot of things. However, we do have now 200-year flood protection in our Feather River West levee, but it turns out that FEMA is looking to, they're underfunded, so looking to raise rates. So some folks may still see, despite the improvements to our levees, still see some increase to their rates, some folks may see a slight decrease, but luckily we do have that protection or may increase even more. There ended up being, admittedly, and they told us this upfront, there's a lot more questions still to be answered regarding how they're going to come up with the flood insurance rates, but it's a lot more detail, a lot more variables involved, not necessarily your address, your proximity to a levee or your elevation. They drill down into square footage or what it would cost to replace a building and, and go on and on. So there are still a lot of questions, but we did have a workshop on that just to bring us up to speed on what's been answered so far. I was surprised to learn that, you know, all the work we put in for the flood protection rates may actually end up going up a little bit in some cases. But anyway, that was it for the last couple of weeks.
All righty, thank you, sir. Councilmember Moon Garden.
Mr. Mayor, I want to start by strongly encouraging anyone who's watching this either live or recorded to participate in the January 25th Funding Workshop. You could, if you were here tonight and saw again the many, many requests that this city gets to participate in many, many things, and I think that what happens, and I'll talk a little bit about the governor's budget here in a second, but what happens is people see all this money coming to the city and they're not really as familiar as they should be in regards to how that money can be spent, there's guardrails around portions of it. And I think it would be very enlightening to groups if they have a rep or themselves to come and listen in. Are we going to zoom that as well? Awesome. Great choice.
Thank you. You think, you think I'd figure that out by now? The public didn't though. Anyway, show up to the January 25th Funding Workshop or, or zoom in. I had the opportunity, thank you for the invite, to, to join Supervisor Conant and present on districting to our local Republican Party and I, I do appreciate the opportunity. There's a lot of questions out there, even as I've sat here, my phone's been blowing off the hook, you know, what's going on, what, what's this mean, et cetera. So I do think we probably need to do a little bit of outreach when this thing's all finalized in regards to what does this all mean. I attended LAFCO and we appointed Don Cochrane as the Chair and Rupeinder Jawanda as the Vice Chair, they continued. There was three real important annexations. One of them involved the county, so that's the Sutter Ranch Annex, that's the east side of Sutter. You know, there's been a fair amount of discussion about that, it's 81 acres, but that was annexed into the Sutter Community Services District. As it relates to the city of Yuba City, we had two annexations into the city that total about 300 and looks like 63 acres into the city. One was the Baines Annexation and that's basically in the Malinkan East Pacific Plan, it's on the east side of the city. George Washington, Lincoln, Bog Road and Sanborn are general perimeters. We also annexed the Kells Annexation and the Kells Annexation is in the Bog Stewart Master Plan area and that is essentially on the west side of 99 and, and it's bounded, again by, I have to look because I forgot, it's bounded by the, on the east is the Gil Cizer, south of Bog Road and it's west of Highway 99, as I mentioned. An item that's really going to be important and not so much to, well, I shouldn't say that, is they continued the workshop on fire services in the, in the county of Sutter. And, you know, I'll, I'll be the first to say that I'm, I'm deeply concerned about what's going on with the county's fire, volunteer fire services. I'm not throwing shade on their fire department at all, I think they've stepped up quite a bit and, and they, you know, they're doing great things. However, they are primarily a volunteer-based fire department. They have professional firefighters who I've worked alongside and have a lot of respect for, but when you are trying to hire people in today's environment, full-time people and/or try to attract volunteers, it's very difficult. So as this municipal service review, if you will, on the fire service comes through the LAFCO, I, I just signal that to us, what's that matter to Yuba City? We share back and forth all the time with the county fire department. Our engines go to some of their calls, their engines go to some of our calls, you know, and so anything that, that potentially degrades whatever it is they're providing out there has a potential to either draw more from us, which could impact Yuba City, or their, impact their ability to come and help us. So it's an important deal, I think, and we need to make sure that we're seated at the table. League of California Cities, along with Councilwoman Espendola, I received a presidential appointment to the Transportation, Communications and Public Works Committee. Obviously, they take care of transportation, communications and public works. And I think that the public works, especially in light of some of the infrastructure money that's coming down, it'll be good to have a connection with these, with these policy committees. I actually served on that committee about 11 years ago, when I was there representing the state's fire chiefs. And, and so I was pleased to be able to get back that and bring what I can back to the city of Yuba City. I will mention that at the orientation that Councilwoman Espendola and I witnessed, they did give a preliminary, some numbers on the, the governor's budget. And it's a $286 billion budget and I'm not going to get into parsonship here, but 20.6 billion is for discretionary purposes. And a highlight for me is that, again, these, a lot of this is going to be one-time money and, and that's great. And if, for those who can afford the opportunity to take the one-time money, as long as they're cognizant of the, the fact that one-time money is one-time money. And that one of the state's, or excuse me, the League of City's priorities is ongoing state funding and sustained financial partnerships, not just this, this one-time money. I would signal because homelessness is, is an issue. I think we heard earlier today that, that there's been some surveys and homelessness is a top of mind issue. There's $8 billion, with a B, billion dollars coming out of this potential budget towards homelessness. So again, whether all of that's one-time money or, or ongoing money, I mean, we'll find that out, there's always the mayor revise anyway, but there's housing money in here, there's homelessness money in here and it'll be, you know, all of our and staff's task, I think, to just be very, very mindful of our opportunities to tap into, into these things because affordable housing, homelessness, safety, the, the supply chain, et cetera, are all, all things that are highlighted in this budget. With that, I think I will conclude my, my comments by go pack, go. And I just made a lot of enemies.
Oh, thank you. Is there a way to scratch that last comment from the record by any chance? So, no, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start by saying Happy New Year. It's great to see everybody, it's great to be back. Let's start off with Subuca, I, I listened in on some of that and Councilman Harris touched on most of it. What was surprising was to hear that FEMA is $20 billion with a B in the red. And so that brought up questions of what rates would look like and so. Mosquito, pretty quiet, other than we got a presentation on the portfolio, portfolio performance for the last year. And they've got a nice, healthy 18.4% return, so they're really happy with what's going on at Mosquito. Rest of it was just business. I was asked and I had the privilege to address the Realtors Association on events in the city and I asked for 45 minutes and they gave me eight. And it's really hard to talk about all the things that are happening in Yuba City in eight minutes. And I think I got most of it. It is, it's really hard because there's so much things going on and hopefully they were as excited as I was. I think I might have bored them a little bit when I talked about redistricting, but, and speaking about redistricting, I am excited about that and I'm excited that we had some participation on that tonight. I think that was a, a genuine question, I thought our attorney and the other gentleman in the room did a great job answering it, but I would, I'm, hopefully I'm going to look forward to following up on that individual with that question. And that's pretty much, that's pretty much it. I would like to conclude this with go Niners.
Now we have two comments we need to strike from the record. So, all right, I will keep my comments very brief tonight because my boys are already at home watching the games going forward. As I said earlier, I'm signed up for cap to cap and they've already got me plugged into the two committees that I served on last time, which is Economic Development and Public Safety. So I look forward to continuing that. With what the Vice Mayor said, as far as, you know, sharing with people what's going on, I am doing, and myself and the Vice Mayor is doing something that Mayor Harris did when he was mayor. We have a mayor city bus tour starting next week. We've sent out invitations, we just about have a full bus. And the purpose of that is to let the people in the city know that are plugged in, the realtors, the lenders, the, you know, different people that need to know and help get the word out of all the good things that's going on in the city. So that'll be occurring next week as well. The last few weeks, I've actually been out of state at my ranch, working on the stuff I needed to there, but I did make it back in time and was asked to speak at Adventure Church on Sunday morning. They celebrated their 10 years of being in existence and so congratulations Pastor Greg and that entire congregation and it was a great honor for me to be there and participate with Assemblymember Gallagher to, to congratulate you guys. Last final things, I want to give a huge, I don't know if you want to call it shout out or just an acknowledgement to our fire department. It was on social media and I, I checked in with Chief Alexander, but we had a medical emergency with one of our personnel and if it hadn't have been for the quick reaction of the captain and the fire teams, they basically saved the life of one of our employees, one of our team members. So huge thank you, shout out to the entire FD team, those particular crew members and want to send, I'm sure from this entire council, well wishes, prayers, thoughts to our fireman that is on the men's. So Chief, if you will carry that forward, we'd greatly appreciate that. I will close with going back to homelessness and we started, it's kind of ironic, you hear about it brought up, we started tonight about Home Key and I'm just going to take the liberty here because Ms. Langley and myself just talked about this, this morning. But the city is committed to doing something about the homeless issue and affordable housing. We have been committed for some time and, you know, as we've talked about, you know, a lot of the money that comes through is one-time money, we've got to look at what's the best use of that, how do we put things together? And a lot of times we get focused on the short-term goals, just seeing instant results. And per our conversation this morning, I would like for us to come back in the next few months, maybe we can get some input from some of our team that deals directly with the homeless crisis here, but really focus on what does a long-term strategy look like? How do we take the money that we have and put it together to make a real impact and not just, as they call it, a flash in the pan? And I think that gets back to what this council's talked about over time. We're not about one-time results, we really are looking for something that's long-lasting. And I know that initially we had a homeless workshop, we were talking about doing it, but with all the changes, we just kind of held off. But I do think that the time to have that is now and I'd like for us to bring that back in the next couple of months and really put our thinking hats on as far as what is some long-term solutions to this. And, you know, dream, think outside of the box because we know that it's only continuing to, to be a bigger problem every year and, you know, there's a lot of great work going on, but this is a problem that continues to grow. So how can we tackle this as a city and let's further, you know, show our commitment to our community that we hear them and we want to do something about this? So let's have this workshop in the next few months and if we could do that, Ms. Langley, that would be, I think the council would all agree, it'd be what we need to do. So with that, if there's no other business to come before this council, then I will consider us adjourned.